I'd like to call the Wednesday, November 4th, 2020 Papillion City Council meeting in order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the role?
Sunday. Mungard. Gaines. Glover. Jaworski. Kluk. Stube. Ingberg.
Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you. And do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. Got one presentation tonight. I think I saw Josh. Yeah, if you'd come up. He's coming up, just for more educational for folks. Josh is with the Sarpy County Economic Development Corporation. He's going to give us an update. And from a metro perspective, if I was to say, if you're sitting down in Florida, Omaha is just a big dot on the map. And that dot represents about eight counties, two states, and 33 communities. And so the way the economic development works, and it actually was a unique model in the nation that others have adopted, each county has an economic development corporation, so it doesn't really care about jurisdictional boundaries. It just cares about the county. And then all of the county economic development corporations come together. And that's part of the Greater Omaha Partnership under the Omaha Chamber. And they just care about the big dot on the map. So if they're working with a site selector, the Greater Omaha Partnership will work with them, just to try to get them to the dot. Once we start understanding where in the county it goes, then that county's economic development corporation will come into play and kind of take the lead. But the applicant's actually working with the same team, for the most part. And then, once they identify the county and they start working with a specific jurisdiction, then the city comes into play, onto the team. And it's just a, it's a really nice partnership in the region, and we get a lot of wins because of it. So Josh is here to give us a third quarter update on Sarpy County.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Black. I should bring you everywhere for that introduction. It's good to see everyone. I know we haven't been around since, I think, the first quarter. But you guys all have the sheets. Is that correct? Okay, perfect. So just going to quickly run through some stuff. I'll touch a little bit on second quarter, jump a little bit in the fourth quarter, and talk a little bit about third quarter. So just briefly, two points on the kind of third quarter report with all the building permit valuations. One thing we were watching is how does COVID affect building permit valuations? We've been pretty steady. I know if you look at third quarter this year, 171 million versus third quarter last year, that 815 million. The discrepancy there is a $609 million Facebook permit that was pulled. So we're still pretty online with normal projects, taking out some of those, those big projects that come every so often. And then, I mean, that kind of runs across the board with housing permits and multifamily permits. Those kind of always jump up and down. But overall, we're, we're pretty similar to your last year and kind of continuing on a similar trend. So good news there. Jumping down to the labor force statistics, as you can see in September, just this past month, we had a rate of 3.1%. So that can be a little bit misleading. We're seeing some shift where, you know, we're having less people actively looking for work. So they're no longer being included in that unemployment rate number, whether those are parents staying home with their kids, you know, caretakers taking care of others, or just an individual that maybe has some health concerns or maybe retires early. So while we are down to 3.1, I think our highest back in, that'd have been April, is about 9%. We're pretty far down. But as you can see, our labor force is at 95,000. That's lower. We're usually around that 97,000, 98,000 at this time. So kind of misleading as far as why is our unemployment rate is so low? But it's good to see it back below 5%. So that's all I was going to touch on on this. I'll jump a little bit over to the project activity sheet. So we did have one landed project in quarter three, so that was R&R Building 3. So that 300 square foot, 1,000 facility. Got to chat with Mike just briefly here. And we've been incredibly happy to have those R&R spec warehouses going up. It's, it's brought a ton of eyes to the area that probably wouldn't come otherwise, because it's one thing to show someone a piece of land. It's another thing to show them a building or a spec warehouse. So that's been incredibly, incredibly beneficial to, you know, the Omaha area as well. Because sometimes, if there's just one site or building, they're not going to come in. But if there's two or three, they'll come in and take a look. So excited to see that success. The other big project, little Project Willow, maybe you've heard of it, landing that in fourth quarter. But I'd be remiss if I didn't mention it. I know a huge thank you to the City of Papillion staff. I wasn't personally too involved with it, but from what I heard from Andrew, no real big issues. So it sounds like it went smoothly, at least from our perspective. So I hope that's the same from your perspective. And really, really looking forward to that. As you, excuse me, as you may have seen, it's about 1,000 new jobs, $15 an hour. Some figures real quick, as far as impact analysis. I forget to breathe in this mask sometime. We're looking at 603 additional workers to the area. So that is in addition to those 1,000 workers. So you go to restaurants, you need a barber, you need an accountant. So 603 to the area, about 368 of those will be in Sarpy County. Then just one other number. We're looking at about a 71, oh, excuse me, a $71 million increase of payroll to the area. Sarpy County specifically, that is 55 million. And then also 155 annual impact to the Sarpy County economy. Let me take a breath. All right. Looking at opportunities, we actually kind of shot up as far as project activity. We were going pretty slow in the first and second quarter. But as you can see, we had 18 opportunities. A lot of those are manufacturing and food processing. So kind of similar to the Papillons Food Project, where it's not a kill facility, but they're bringing in a food product and kind of finishing it off to a finished product. So we continue to see a big, strong interest in that, or a lot of activity. And then also just kind of in manufacturing in general, everything from, you know, 10-person manufacturing outfits to 400-person manufacturing outfits. So we were actually really surprised with how, how strong that third quarter activity was. Just kind of finishing it out a little quick with business interactions. If you look at our business retention, expansion visits, those are a little bit lower. The reason for that is you go up to that COVID-19 calls, we separate those out. So in the second quarter, we really tried to call on those contacts that normally we'd spread them throughout the year. We really tried to just touch base with everyone as many as we could. So that's why we have 37 there. Add in the 18, we're at about 55 for the year, which we shoot for 100 every, between two years. So we're at that goal. But we're continuing to try and engage with employers to see how things are going. On that note, a lot of the employers we talked to, they're pretty optimistic. Most of those are in the construction area. That being said, it has been a little bit harder to get ahold of some employers. So we think that maybe we're just talking to the employers that are, you know, doing good and being happy versus some employers that are struggling or aren't as willing to talk to us. So just kind of tempering that expectation. That's kind of a quick run-through. I know one other thing to note is kind of this work-from-home phenomenon. I know obviously the employer in Papillion kind of sold their facility to have everyone work from home. We are seeing other employers where maybe they were, excuse me, looking to expand, looking at a new facility, well, finds out their workers can work from home. They don't need that new facility yet. So we'll kind of see how things turn around. I know we've had a lot of kind of presentations by economists. They say, once we get a vaccine, things should kind of shoot back up through the roof. But until then, we're going to be kind of trudging along probably at a pretty steady pace. But that's kind of a brief overview of past couple quarters. I'd be happy to entertain any questions or provide any clarifications.
And I think just so council's aware, your comment about some employers going virtual, one of the impacts to Papillion was Info Group. They had, I don't know, a couple hundred thousand square foot, 270,000 square foot facility, I think, that could support about 1,200 employees. They didn't have that many there, but pretty, pretty close. And when COVID hit, they sent everybody off virtual. And then they realized how easy that was. And that's why now you see a for-sale sign on the Info Building. They had every intent of staying there. They'd actually done a lot of improvements to it the year before, parking lot and some others, about a million dollars. And then when they realized how easy it was to go virtually, they said, well, we'll just keep doing that. And they put the building up for sale. So we lost a lot of employees, but good news, we've got a very nice building with a lot of vacancies. So hopefully we'll see some announcements there sooner than later. So any questions for Josh? Appreciate the partnership.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve, a motion to approve the consent agenda? Most by Councilman Gaines, second by Councilwoman Kluk. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item D1, Ordinance 1905, an ordinance to approve a change, yes, sir? Say that again? I did skip Administrator's Report. It's because we changed the seats up here. Mr. Green, Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thought I was going to get away with something. Appreciate that. Next Wednesday, November 11th, is Veterans Day. City Hall and non-public safety offices will be closed that day. And on behalf of our city staff, we honor and thank all of those who have served this great country. A reminder that a joint city council planning commission presentation and discussion regarding missing middle housing with Dan Peralek will be held in the Chrysalis Rooms at the Landing next Thursday, well, coming up on Thursday, November 12th, beginning at 5:30 PM. And please note, please bring with you either your iPads or a laptop so that you can individually be seen and interact with Mr. Peralek. A reminder and further instructions will be sent out soon. As you are aware, positive cases of COVID-19 are on the increase in Sarpy County. The increase in cases has also impacted City of Papillion employees, occasionally through contact with other employees who later test positive, but most often through family members and friends. The city council should rest assured that we continue to encourage all of our employees to take appropriate precautions to keep themselves, their families, and their coworkers safe. An email reminder of our current COVID-19 safety practices will be resent to all city employees tomorrow. Finally, just a reminder that the City Hall renovation project will be going out for bid next week. Bids are due back in December, and you should have it before you, hopefully, at the second meeting in December. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for the reminder. Item D1, Ordinance 1905, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from AG Agricultural to LI Limited Industrial for the property legally described as attractive land located in the northwest quarter of Section 2 Township 13 North Range 11 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the southeast corner of South 156th and Shram Road. The applicant is R&R Realty Group. It's R&R Commerce Park South. Is there a councilman that will introduce? Introduced by Councilman Ingberg. And we'll note for the record, Mr. Homo with R&R's here. Thanks for the partnership. Again, if people heard Josh's update on the economic development and how we now have actual industrial vacant buildings and we're getting wins of that, that is because of R&R. So Mike, thanks for everything you guys are doing to impact the market. Item E1, Ordinance 1885, an ordinance to adopt the 2018 International Building Codes. This is a public hearing, and I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Yes. When you come up, if you'd state your name for the record.
Yep. Hello, my name's Nick Dolphins, the Director of Operations for the Home Company and a board member or a member of MOBA's Builder Council. And this is Jaylene Allenstein, Executive Director of MOBA. So we've been working with Sean for about 18 months and the other local jurisdiction building officials. And but behalf of Metro Omaha Builders Association and our 350 members, we're in favor of the adoption of Ordinance 1885. MOBA's mission to promote and protect the home building industry. The principles of the IRC fall in line with MOBA's desire to protect the public health, safety, and welfare. Furthermore, MOBA has been meeting with all the local jurisdictions for the past 16 months. And we feel it's important for there to be a consistency between jurisdictions with the adopted codes. So thanks to Sean and the group that's helped with that.
Thank you for coming out and testifying as well. Appreciate that. Always a little nervous changing building codes and whether the industry's accepting them or not. So again, really appreciate you coming out. Do we have any other proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E2, Ordinance 1899, an ordinance to amend Section 205, 2 through 208a6 of Article 33, Supplemental Use Regulations of Chapter 205 Zoning Regulations, having to do with beauty and barber shops as a home-based business or home occupation. The applicant is the City of Papillion. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E3, Ordinance 1902, an ordinance to approve the vacation of the unimproved part of South 96th Street Right-of-way in the south half of the southwest quarter of Section 22 and the north half of the northwest quarter of Section 27, both in Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, with title thereto retained by the City of Papillion. It's a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. E4, Ordinance 1903, an ordinance to approve the conveyance of title for that part of South 96th Street Right-of-way to be vacated by Ordinance 1902 from the City of Papillion to the Papio Missouri River Natural Resource District. Open the public hearing. Proponents? Any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item E5, Ordinance 1904, an ordinance to adopt a property-assessed Clean Energy Pace District and to amend the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt regulations to create and administer a pace program for the City of Papillion. It's getting public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 1881, an ordinance to annex certain real estate to the City of Papillion, Nebraska, and to provide for an effective date thereof. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1881? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilwoman Kluk. Any council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. And just if people are curious if they hadn't read the report, that's for the Amazon site, is what that was. Item F2, Ordinance 1882, an ordinance to change the official zoning map of the City of Papillion in accordance with Section 20532 of the Papillion Municipal Code to adopt a zoning map and to apply existing or future zoning regulations, property use regulations, building ordinances, electrical ordinances, plumbing ordinances, and all other regulatory ordinances of the City of Papillion pursuant to Nebraska Revised Statute 6-901. The applicant's City of Papillion. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1882? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Ingberg. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F3, Ordinance 1888, an ordinance to amend Chapter 170 of the Papillion Municipal Code having to do with a subdivision of land in its entirety and to provide for an effective date, the applicant's the City of Papillion. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1888? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F4, Ordinance 1900, an ordinance to amend the fiscal year 2020/2021 budget. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1900? Motion by Councilwoman Kluk, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any discussion? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Item F5, Resolution R200189, a resolution to approve a final plat for the property legally described as attractive land located in part of the northeast quarter of the northeast quarter and part of the northwest quarter of the northeast quarter of Section 29, and also along with part of the northwest quarter of the northwest quarter and part of the southwest quarter of the northwest quarter of Section 28, and also all of Outlet A Granite Lake, a subdivision located in said northwest quarter of Section 28, all located in Township 14 North Range 12 East of the 6 PM Sarpy County, Nebraska, generally located on the northeast corner of South 114th Street and Lincoln Road. The applicant is Stone Creek Plaza LLC, Granite Falls North Phase 3. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200189? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any up, yes, sir? If you'd state your name for the record.
Doug Walter, E&amp;A Consulting Group, 10909 Mill Valley Road. I'm just here on behalf of the developer. Be happy to answer any questions you have.
Thank you very much. Do we have any opponents? Is there any council discussion or questions? Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
Motion passes. Thank you. Item F6, Resolution R200190, a resolution to approve the Fifth Amendment to the Granite Falls North Subdivision Agreement. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R200190? Motion by Councilman Stube, second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion. Please vote.
Eight yes, zero nays.
He had his hand up before you said it. That's why I gave it to him. It's all the regular agenda items. Committee reports, I think Public Safety Committee met tonight. Do we have a report? Mr. Gaines.
Thank you, Mayor. So over the last few Public Safety Committee meetings, we've been addressing the issues of Ordinance 1886 and the RV or mobile food vendor issue. And so tonight, being that it's the end of the year, we were trying to get all these things buttoned up. The first thing that we discussed was Ordinance 1886. The goal of the committee was to make sure that the mayor did have power to enact a curfew if necessary. But we wanted to make sure that that power was, there were some limitations on it. We wanted to include some other people in it. So a couple of the things that the committee did, we've been working on rewording some of it. There were some redundancies that were in that ordinance. And we also put a failsafe where the mayor needs a recommendation from the Chief of Police and the President of the City Council. And then at that point, the mayor may, if he chooses, enact an ordinance or enact a curfew. So we recommended as a committee that that comes to the full council so that the full council can get briefed on, you know, what's in the, the new ordinance or what changes we were recommending, and then bring it up for discussion and vote. We felt like that was the best thing and most appropriate thing at this point in time. The second issue that we've been addressing for quite some time is, if you all recall, it's been a while now, but we were having discussion on banning mobile food trucks from South Washington Street. It got referred to the committee. We've went over it, went over it, went over it. We've tried to find ways to accommodate these mobile food vendors within the city because personally, I welcome them here. And I think we all took a, you know, we all have a little bit different views. There were some safety concerns, so on and so forth. And so we recommended three to one tonight to bring that back to the council. There are a few little changes in there, and both of these packets will get, you know, from the city staff. But we just felt it was time for it to be addressed by the council as a whole. So that should be coming up here at some point. And then the other thing that we recommended is that on the meeting, the second meeting in November, there's going to be a master fee schedule change. And within it, there's going to be, it's our understanding that there's going to be some fees discussed for the mobile food vendors. So what was brought up in committee was that possibly offering an incentive prior to discussing this mobile food thing on Washington Street, an incentive to not park on Washington Street, maybe a waiver of fees if a mobile vendor decided to park in First Street Plaza or to the east side in the alley or parking lot behind Twisted Vine. And so we are going to have the city staff, we recommended that to have the city staff write up an amendment so that we could add that to the master fee schedule and bring it to the council for the whole council's consideration. So, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Do we have any comments from the floor? Come up and introduce yourself and what you're doing here. People would have seen you like seven or eight years ago.
Probably. So I think most of you met me already. My name's Bobby Larson. I'm a third-year law student at the University of Nebraska College of Law. A month or two ago, Councilwoman Kluk suggested that I come shadow the city attorney. So I had the opportunity to shadow Carla today, at court this morning, and then at the subcommittee meeting prior to this meeting, and then at this meeting as well, just so I could see if this was something that would interest me and to learn more about it. And like the mayor was alluding to, I was on the mayor's youth council from 2010 to 2014. So I have a little bit of familiarity with the city, but it's been a little while. But I appreciate everyone who's talked to me today and helped, especially Carla, shown me around and taught me a little bit about what she does. So thank you for that.
We'd probably let anybody come up, but maybe it's a benefit of being an alumni of the youth council. You've got more rights to come up and hang around and visit, so. Thanks for being interested. And the door is open if you want to come back. Any council comments? Seeing none. Again, the reminder of the Joint Planning Commission and City Council meeting on the 12th, on Thursday at 5:30. Again, we've been having a lot of discussions, some when applications come forward, some cite discussions of individuals about housing types, housing affordability, multifamily, missing middle, the Prairie Queen project, and it's just been a really active conversation. And so the session on the 12th is specifically on that missing middle housing type conversation. And the goal, I think, is to get a little bit educated on it so we can all have some common basis for discussion. But maybe also start getting some high-level discussion that can start establishing maybe some policy direction. And then I think Mr. Sturzma, based on that, is probably going to have a lot of work to do to articulate the, the policy of the council eventually into our zoning code and that. So it's not going to be a small effort. So very, very important meeting that's going to start the process. So hopefully, everybody can make that. Couple of things from the last couple of weeks, we continue the weekly meetings with the Health Department, as was mentioned. The seven-day rolling average as of last Thursday still had been seen an increase. We'll know in the morning what that's looking like. And so if you have any questions regarding that, let me know, and we'll, we can bring that up in the 9:30, otherwise we'll keep you updated. We also had a United Cities Conference Call. Again, the main thing is just getting ready for the upcoming session. I think I've mentioned it before, if there's an area of legislation that interests you that we should actively be looking at, now is a very good time to be bringing that up because we're at the start of a biennium. So we can actually work to get something introduced this year and still have another year to work on it. So if you have anything of interest, let us know. League of Municipalities had a virtual conference. I think a couple of you might have participated in a couple of those sessions. We also had the Comprehensive Plan Meeting. Thanks to everybody that participated in that. And again, that was with the Planning Commission as well. And we hadn't done a joint meeting with the Planning Commission in years. So I like the fact that we're doing a couple of those. So thanks for supporting that. We had the announcement for Amazon, Project Willow, and that was very well received. Again, if people are not aware, that's 1,000 new jobs they're announcing, and those are new-to-market jobs. And the minimum wage, basically with no skills, is $15 an hour with comprehensive benefits that includes health, dental vision, day one, and a partial contribution to a 401K. So you think of maybe even people some, maybe had not been employable, now getting health insurance and at least getting some education. So that's a very good project, and I think they want, they're still on target. I think they want to launch in 2021. If you've been at the site, there's a lot of work going on. So we're very appreciative of that. Had the Sarpy County Economic Development Investors Meeting, but Josh gave most of the updates that we heard there. The Wastewater Agency had a board meeting. It was probably, it was a very important one. The, you've all been briefed on the OPPD natural gas project. And the issue there was it is in the sewer agency. And there's been some public controversy on that with Sarpy County because of the concern with some solar and how much space they're taking up. And that concern got mixed up in the natural gas conversation. And so at the sewer agency meeting, the city was actually asking for an exception to the growth management plan so to allow septic to be put in so that natural plant could go in. And it was a little bit politically charged because of some of the previous confusion with solar. But that did pass 5-1, so that was a very important vote. That'll now be going through our Planning Commission, then it'll come up to council. So you'll get briefed on that again when it, once it comes up here. So OPPD's been a fantastic partner, and that was a, that was a very important meeting. And staff did a tremendous amount of work, planning and legal, so very, thank you for that. And then we had another ribbon cutting, the Neurological Consultants of Nebraska. So neurologists opened a practice on 96th and 370. That's very nice to have, as we're growing, to get some of those professional services. And then just to congratulate Councilwoman Kluk on the election. Congratulations. And Mr. Stube, Mr. Glover, and Mr. Gaines, congratulations. And I guess you're around for four more years. So thanks for your leadership. Any other council discussion? Mr. Stube.
Yeah, I forgot about mentioning the fact that cleanup days. And obviously, I think it's a great service for the citizens of Papillion. And I want to take this opportunity to thank staff for all of the coordination efforts. And I noticed Jeff was out there early on Saturday morning when I was there, and I didn't get a donut from him, but but there's no question, there was a lot of staff that was out there, and I think it's just a great event. And I wanted to take an opportunity to publicly recognize the staff. a greater than, I wanted to take an opportunity to publicly recognize the staff for going through that effort.
Thank you for doing that. Any other council discussion? Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover, second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote. We are adjourned.